Meeting come to order. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the April 4th, 2023 Board of County Commissioners meeting. This time, I'd like to get Commissioner Perkins to do the invocation. Commissioner Mobley to do the pledge, if you'll all stand.
Let us pray. God our Father in heaven, we come now, dear God, giving you thanks and praise. Father, we come boldly before the throne of grace. Ask that you look upon us, dear God, this night with God. Give us the wisdom and knowledge and understanding to be able to disciple these things that have come before this board. And God would pray that you be with each one of these commissioners, dear God. Look on our attorney, look on our public work director. And dear God, you look on every department, dear God, every department head. And Father, you look on this nation, God, look on our leadership of this nation. And God would pray that you bring peace to God. And God would pray to look on those, dear God, that is in war, dear God, look on our first responders, God, look on them in a mighty way. And God would pray, dear God, that you should have the glory and all the praise. In Christ we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under the God, in the name of our beloved and free and just law. Starting with item number one, approval of amendments for the March 21st, 2023 regular board meeting. Is there any discussion or changes or motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Perkins.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lynn. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda, need to pull item number five for a change. So we'll be looking at items two through four and item six. Is there any discussion or motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Lynn.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five o. Item number five, approval of amendment number one to the Public Transportation Grant Agreement to add additional funds to design and construct a new hangar at the Swanee County Airport, adoption of enabling resolution and authorize staff to execute all related documents. Mr. Revat, do you want to discuss that?
Mr. Chairman, as I pointed out, just on the enabling resolution itself, paragraph number three has a scribbler's error in it, and it needs to be changed from county administrator Randy Harris to county administrator Craig Scott. That's it.
Did everybody get that?
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion or a motion to approve?
A move to approve as amended.
Motion by Commissioner Lynn.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five o. Item number seven, at 5:35 or as soon thereafter as the matter can be heard, hold a public hearing to approve final year-end budget amendments for the fiscal year 2021-22. Mr. Gentry.
Let's see. Good evening. This year, we have two amendments for to close out, to help us close out the 21-22 year. And as you see here, we have the state attorney, we have additional funds for the reimbursement for the period lease, $10,328, increasing that revenue source line to $284,673 with the expenses going toward the lease over there for the office, same amount. And our second amendment is for the water sewer plant. And we had these grants here, one for the water plant, $883,741, and for the sewer plant grant for $724,737, adding one point, oh, I'm sorry, $1,608,478 to that revenue source totaling $1,804,084 and the expenditures with, associated with that grant. Those are the two changes for the prior year. You have any questions or?
Any questions of staff?
I don't know, sir.
No.
Mr. Revat, you need to swear to anybody either?
Uh, no, sir, not for this.
Not for this?
Not for this style.
Okay. So we, do we need to open it for public comment?
Yes, sir.
This time, I'll open the floor to public comment. Anybody wishing to speak? Seeing none, excuse me? Seeing none, I'll close, close the floor to public comment. Is there any further board discussion?
No, sir.
Do we have a motion to adopt?
I make a motion to approve the budget with amendments, suppose that be your.
Motion by Commissioner Hale.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lynn. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you, Mr. Gentry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number eight, proclamations and presentations. Item number eight, declaring April 2023 as National Healthcare Decisions Month. I'll read the proclamation. Or is there somebody here that wanted to read it other than me?
I like when you read it.
Okay. I like it better when you read it. National Healthcare Decisions Day proclamation. Whereas National Healthcare Decisions Day is recognized across the country on April 16th, it is, I'm sorry, it is designed to inspire, educate, and empower the public and providers about the importance of advanced care planning, to raise the public awareness of the need to plan for healthcare decisions, especially those related to end-of-life care and medical decision-making when patients are unable to speak for themselves, and to encourage the specific use of advanced directives to communicate these important healthcare decisions. And whereas healthcare and community organizations across Florida State are assisting people to plan for future healthcare decisions in the event they are unable to make their own medical decisions, and to encourage the use of advanced directives to communicate these important healthcare decisions. And whereas, and whereas a large percentage of Swanee County residents have not yet prepared for healthcare decisions in times of crisis and/or at the end of life, had not had important conversations with their families, loved ones, and their healthcare providers, and documented those decisions. And whereas, it is likely that a significant reason for this large percentage is that there is both a lack of knowledge and considerable confusion in the public about advanced care planning and advanced directives. And whereas, one of the principal goals of the National Healthcare Decisions Day is to encourage physicians and their care teams, medical groups, hospitals, and health systems, nursing homes, assisted living facilities, continue care, continuing care retirement communities, hospice, and community organizations to participate in a statewide effort to provide clear and consistent information to the public about advanced care planning. And whereas, community hospice and Haven Hospice and other healthcare organizations and community groups have endorsed this event and are committed to educating the public about the importance of discussing healthcare choices and executing advanced directives. And whereas, the COVID-19 pandemic makes advanced care planning even more important with every age group being impacted, and 840,000 deaths and counting in the United States attributed to this virus. Whereas, a result of the month of April 2023 being recognized as National Healthcare Decisions Month, and April 16th, 2023 is National Healthcare Decisions Day, more citizens will have conversations about healthcare decisions, more citizens will execute advanced directives to make their own wishes known, and fewer families and healthcare providers will have to struggle with making difficult healthcare decisions in the absence of guidance from the patient. Now therefore, through the authority vested in me by the Board of County Commissioners of Swanee County, Florida, I do hereby proclaim April 2023 as National Healthcare Decisions Month, with April 16th, 2023 as National Healthcare Decisions Day, to encourage citizens to increase their understanding and awareness of care at the end of life, discuss their life and life wishes with their families, and observe this month with appropriate activities and programs in Swanee County, Florida. Duly proclaim this fourth day of April, AD 2023. Wow, it's a mouthful.
Yeah. You did great.
Do y'all, you want to speak? You just want to do the picture?
Well, I think she wants to talk at all.
She does, and that's great.
I will just say this, if anyone doesn't have advanced care planning in place, we do that for free to anyone. You don't have to have a connection to Haven, you don't have to have a loved one on Haven services. We'd be happy to help you guys do that. And I'll leave some cards out here before we go.
Would you please identify yourself?
I'm sorry.
Please.
Name and address for the record.
This is your fault.
I do. I take full blame.
Amanda Butler. You want like street address? Yeah. 125 Southwest Callaway, Lake City, Florida.
Well, I think it's great y'all are doing that. We've had to deal with it in our family, and so I'm sure a lot of others have, and we appreciate what y'all do, and it's really a good thing to inform people.
Yeah. A hospice heart is special. Not everyone has a heart for hospice.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you. You want to do the picture now?
Yep.
You want to do it up here or down there?
Just come right up here.
All right.
Come on, guys.
I'm gonna pretend this is proclamation.
Yes, sir. Come on in here, Mr. Lawrence.
He's gonna get through the maze there.
Are we all in?
You talking about some big boys up here?
Yeah, yeah. I, listen, you want a good picture?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Get a little bit more. Maybe you take.
They're, 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 they're fine, they're fine. I don't want them to break my camera. It's too expensive. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it, though.
I guess we should have voted on what happened.
Well, do we need to vote?
You need to do that. You need to vote.
Yep. Chairman, make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Hale to adopt National Healthcare Decisions Day, and second by Commissioner Mobley. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number nine, presentation of home rule community resolution or ordinance by Mr. Moses Klepper.
Moses Klepper, 14581, 102nd Pat, Live Oak, Florida. Yes, sirs. I, I come up here tonight, I'm representing the American Patriots. We've been hashing this, this ordinance out, this proposed ordinance out for quite some time now. We, we, we did quite a bit of research and a lot of concern within our ranks of seeing this thing come through and pass. The, I know that quite some time back, the Swanee County joined the ranks of 40 other counties within the state of Florida to declare, I believe by resolve, that we're a Second Amendment sanctuary, and I believe that's a good start. I, I believe what we're proposing tonight will extend that and even give more protection to the, or we do, to the citizens of Swanee County. I'd like to preference, would you like me to read this? Is that what we do?
Well, I was gonna say, do you want me to read it, or you want to read it?
You're welcome to read it, but I'd like to preference it with a couple of things first.
Well, go ahead.
Okay. The, there's case law that states all laws that are, that contradict the Constitution are null and void, and that case law is Marbury versus Madison. It's impossible for a law that violates the Constitution to be valid. Our Constitution is the supreme law of the land. There presently are, are, let's see, well, that's what I want to say. All right. So please go ahead and read that.
Whereas the county of Swanee recognizes the Constitution of the United States as the governing law of the land, and the Bill of Rights is a guaranteeing and enailing the rights of Americans, including the freedom of religion, speech, the press, assembly, privacy, and petitioning the government for redress of grievances. And whereas each of the county duly elected public servants has sworn to defend and uphold the United States Constitution and the Constitution of the state of Florida. And whereas the county of Swanee denounces and condemns all acts of terrorism wherever occurring, and whereas any new security measures resulting from the attacks against the United States that occurred on September 11th, 2001, should be carefully designed and employed by federal, state, and local governments to enhance public safety without infringing on the civil liberties and rights of innocent citizens of the county of Swanee, the nation, or the world. And whereas certain provisions of the uniting and strengthening America by providing appropriate tools required to intercept and obstruct Terrorism Act of 2001, also known as the USA Patriot Act, the USA Freedom Act, as well as several executive orders allowing the federal government to conduct surveillance on and detain citizens of the county of Swanee, the nation, and the world. Now therefore, be it resolved that the county of Swanee affirms its strong opposition to terrorism, but also affirms that any efforts to end terrorism not be waged at the expense of the fundamental civil liberties, rights, and freedoms of the people of the county of Swanee, the United States, or the world. Be it resolved that it is the policy of the county of Swanee to oppose any portion of the USA Patriot Act, USA Freedom Act, or other act, order, or measure that would violate the rights and liberties guaranteed equally under the state and federal constitutions. And be it further resolved in accordance with the state and federal constitutions, the county of Swanee is opposed to actions which violate due process, Fifth Article of the Bill of Rights, and right to privacy, Fourth Article of the Bill of Rights, without probable cause. Be it further resolved that the county of Swanee is opposed to the collection or maintenance of information about the political, religious, medical, or social views, association, or activities of any individual unless the information directly relates to an investigation of criminal activities based on probable cause, not mere suspicion of criminal conduct. And it be, and be it further resolved that the county of Swanee is opposed to any mandated medical treatments or quarantine camps, and endorses the right of each citizen to refuse medical treatments. Be it further resolved that the county of Swanee implores the, implores the United States Congress to repeal any provisions of the USA Patriot Act, USA Freedom Act, or other measures that infringe on civil liberties and oppose any pending and future legislation that similarly infringe on civil rights and liberties.
Yes, sir.
Did I cover it?
Yes.
Anything further on that? We're gonna have to let the attorney review this.
Right. I, I kind of expected that would come to pass. There, as you notice, we got a common thread going through here about infringements on civil liberties, and, and again, please keep in mind that, as a preferences or statement, that the, the Constitution is the law of the land. Any, any law, and, and again, please make note of that case law, there may be other case law, but that Marbury versus Madison explains it perfectly. It's already set deal. Any, any law that contradicts the Constitution is moot, and it's against the law, actually. So, any questions?
Any questions, guys?
No, sir.
We'll get the attorney to review it and bring it back.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayes. Moving on to staff items. I got two, Mr. Jimmy Norris, you want to come on first, and then Mr. Greg Bailey had something. Jason, do you have anything tonight?
Well, mine's about Tuesday.
You're on the clock.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Just want to give you guys a few updates, mainly just upcoming events and things like that that are going on. Yesterday, we were able to meet with the representatives and owners from Bennerholz, and I want to mention that real quick. I just want to say that because I want the, the folks that were able to get out and just thank the fire department guys, and Mr. Bailey, and Ron was there, and a lot of folks from the county went out and had some good discussions about fire protection, what that looks like in the future out there, and the site and future development. So we, they were very accommodating, and so we tried to be the same. But I know it takes time out of everybody's day to do that, but it's very important. They're a great partner, and just excited about what the future looks like out there. And of course, Mr. Scott was there. Thank everyone for being a part of that. Want to mention, let's see, Mr. Dana and his comrade Jeff over there. You know, I guess years or so ago, it's probably longer than that, wasn't it, Mr. Hale? Over on Palm Street, those guys were doing a lot of development over there, and that road, Palm Street's the road that's by First Federal that goes down to the, the concrete plant, Columbia Ready Mix, you guys know where that's at? Well, he had, gosh, I don't know how many, 12, 15, 20 businesses down that street that he brought in, but that street was a mess, one of the worst roads I've ever been on my life. So it was, it was definitely an issue. And I think Commissioner Hale reached out to me. We went over there one morning and met with their team, and we just kind of stood there and watched people try to navigate that road. So we, we were able to get together, have a meeting, and with, with the cooperation of the city and the county coming together, we were able to do the, the bottom end work, I guess, the base work on that road, and, and then the city was able to get it paved. So we are now at the point where we want to show, you know, our appreciation to all those folks and those businesses for being so patient, and Mr. Dana and Jeff. And so we're gonna have a ribbon cutting. Everyone's invited. It's April the 13th at 2:00 p.m. I hope all you have it on your calendars already, but for the general public, it's, again, April 13th at 2:00 p.m. We're gonna kind of meet down at the warehouses, not right on 129 to kind of get out of the main traffic, but we're gonna step back and we're gonna show what progress looks like down on that road, and then we're gonna show some appreciation for the folks who made it happen. So please be sure that's on your calendars. Also, I want to remind all of you guys, rural county days is the 25th and 26th of April. It should be all on your calendars, and all of your accommodations should be made. This young lady over here, I'm sure took care of that for you. So we're looking forward to that. Also, starting April 17th through 20th, we're gonna be doing part two of our tourism video that we've been working on, and we're real excited about that. So hopefully the weather and the river level cooperates with us, but we'll be circumventing the county again. Shout out to Jason, his team over there, they're kind of being sure those springs are gem up and jelly tight, so we get some good shots. And also, some of our local businesses will be shooting inside of some of them as well. Want to mention also, just today, I want to thank Jason and his team. We've got a new brochure right going out, the busy bee, the one we've had out there for years, it's been moved so many times, it's fallen apart. So they requested a new brochure right there, it came in today, and it was too big to even go through the door of our office. So with that, with the help of his team, we were able to get it loaded up, and we're gonna install that thing first thing in the morning out there. So I really appreciate the cooperation between the other departments out there, and he didn't even hesitate. Of course, I had Chris, I called him, not me, so figured that would work a little better. And then kind of lastly, Chris and myself and the chairman were able to go. Duke Energy had a next-level event last Friday, and it was, it was only economic development, but it was actually on retail development, not necessarily manufacturing or industrial commercial type stuff. And when you think retail, think basically any store that you could think of where they sell food, or whatever kind of merchandise they may sell. Excuse me. And there were a couple of interesting points. Because it was put on from Duke Energy, of course, they concentrated on the south end of the county, for my south end friends, because Duke actually services some of those folks down there. So what was really nice is they did case studies, and I forgot to thank Greg Bailey for being our engineer in some of these meetings. Sorry about that, Greg. It just came to me like that. See how that works? Thank you too, Greg. Love you. So, oh, they, they, they were looking at the south end, and they picked the Dollar General store down there, and they did a, we've got in all kinds of data about what goes on down there. And first of all.
Listen, before you get too far with that, I want them to all guess.
That's, first of all, how many Dollar Generals do we think are in the state of Florida? Somebody shoot me a number. Eight hundred and sixty-six. Eight hundred and sixty-six in the state of Florida. Yeah. Well, you gotta buy food somewhere. So now, out of all of those eight hundred and sixty-six, where do we think the one in Branford ranks?
Top ten.
I stopped there.
Top ten.
Number three.
It ranks number three in the state of Florida as far as sales. So people in the south end like their Dollar General.
A lot of tourists go down there.
What I'm trying to say is, don't discard Dollar General or any other store from coming to your community, because the sales tax revenue and the jobs created are imported, and there's a place for different kinds of businesses. These reports are very helpful. I can even tell you what month, and what time, and what day you guys like to go to the Dollar General. Apparently, y'all do a lot of Christmas shopping there, because December was extremely hot.
Twenty-first, wasn't it?
Yes. It was, it, it was first, and you like going between 12:00 and 6:00 p.m. on Sundays. So after church, I guess, everybody hits Dollar General, maybe we need to go down there. But it was really good, and what the company was kind of showing us was they're able to track these things, and they're able to help us identify what's right for our particular market. This was just a case study of one particular entity, but it was, it was, it was a great meeting. We're hoping we can maybe work with them on some, some projects to help identify where some of our gaps are here on the retail side in Swanee County. And when I say Swanee County, that means all of Swanee County.
All of Swanee.
Right. So, but, Mr. Chairman, you were there, if there's any.
Well, I was like you, I, I didn't realize it was a retail thing when we went over there, because most of the stuff we go to is, is different. It's industrial or whatever.
Right.
This was a retail, so it, it was very informative, and the people that do this, they do it for a living, and y'all know when you send me somewhere, I'm coming back with somebody to put on a presentation, so this ain't, this ain't no different. But just really informative, and, and they have a lot of contacts that, and a lot of numbers, just like the numbers Mr. Norris was putting out there, they, they already have all that information, and they know who to target, and they know who to go ask, and they have, like I said, all the connections. So I just thought it was, I was, it was, it was very informative, and, and it just held my attention the whole time we were there. So that's how I judge how good something is, is how far my mind wanders when I'm sitting there listening to a lot of that. And so I was, I was dialed in the whole time they were there, so I thought it was real good.
Same here. Went by too quick. That's how we knew it was good stuff, and we're hoping we can do some good things with them in the future, so that's all we got.
Thank you, Mr. Norris. Any questions, Mr. Norris? Well, you got him there?
Two minutes is up.
Mr. Bailey, you're on cue. Name and address, please, sir.
1450 Southwest State Road 47, Lake City. Before we get started, I'd like to introduce one of our newer employees. Most of you may remember Jimmy Pittman. He retired from our services back the first of the year. We were fortunate to have Ryan Asmus here join us. Ryan comes from DOT, got twenty-five.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one years there. Probably his most prominent recent position there was he was in charge of, if you remember, the EMCORs, when the department was looking at the routes along the coast to kind of cut the corner off of I-10 and I-75. So we're glad to have him on board. He's done a lot of DOT work. He knows the DOT processes, he knows all of those procedures and policies, and how to, you know, make sure we comply with all that, and he's very good at also working with the people up there, he's got a very good rapport with those, so we're looking for great things from him to be able to help us, us to be able to help Swanee County.
Boy, have I got a conversation for you.
Yes, sir, Commissioner.
My question, Mr. Chairman, is do you know where the money's at?
Well, I was gonna ask him if he could sign the check.
Yeah.
That's what, or the person that can, can sign that check.
Yes, sir, that, that is, that is the question, for sure.
I'd like to know how Mr. Bailey. I'd like to know how Mr. Bailey smooths you away from the DOT after 21 years.
He's a pretty good negotiator.
Is he?
Yes, sir. No, but actually, I'm from Taylor County. And I was really excited to be able to get back into the local work. I'd been doing M-Course for a while and had been starting to make contacts with a lot of the local areas and was really just excited about the opportunity. And Greg has a great company just right down the road from us. And so when Jimmy, when he retired, it created a great opportunity. And so I'm just happy to be a part of the team.
Glad to have you.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely.
With that, I will give you an update on the projects that we're working on. If you've got any questions, just ask. We'll start with the fire station out on 129. Our building plans are approximately 70% complete with that. Probably the biggest issue, I think, right now that we're having to evaluate, the connection at 129 was always permitted and planned to be a joint use driveway between the property that the county acquired and the adjacent property where the auction site is. With discussions with county fire department staff, there are some concerns about having that joint use driveway. Obviously, we've got emergency vehicles entering, exiting the highway. So they want to make sure that there's not going to be any conflict with what they're trying to do. So we'll be working through that issue with the fire department and see what the impact is going to be and what alternatives we may be able to consider there. Okay?
I got a question. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
What would be possible alternatives?
Well, we could petition the department because it is an emergency type access to allow another driveway connection there or either change that driveway connection up. There could be some possible preemption signals to be put out there. We've just got to see what, see what that's going to work, work out to be. We need to have a conversation with adjacent property owner right now. We're not sure exactly what their use is and how heavy that use is. That's how it would impact, you know, the emergency vehicle entering, exiting the DOT highway. Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
Mr. Bailey, what you said, I think some of the early talks we had with them was having some type of signals down there that would go off and, you know, let folks know that they're coming through there. So that was, and I seen they give me some drawings one time with that and what that would look like.
Yeah. I'm not sure the department would allow us to have like two adjacent driveways. So there may not be a lot of opportunity for a whole lot of changes, but other than just trying to control that access in there.
But, well, how do you, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. How do you, I mean, I don't know that you can, but I guess the question is, how do you, you know, you talked about shared access and what the adjacent usage, adjacent landowners' usage is, but how do you predict what it will be? I mean, it's surrounded by vacant land there. So how do you-
Well, the only way you do that is you've got to find out what their business plan is and you kind of project that as best you can and see how it goes. At the end of the day, we're going to rely on the fire department to tell us based on this amount of conflict, whatever it happens to be, is that something that we can work with? Does it hinder our emergency response in that manner? So we're just going to look at that and see. With the preemption out there, the problem with that is, is because we do have joint use, I don't just have emergency vehicles going in and out of that driveway. And how do you work that all together? So it'll be the department of transportation along with our fire department to determine what really alternatives we do have.
I understand that.
I understand the concern there, what you're saying, but obviously, I mean, you go to Gainesville, Jacksonville, Lake City, there's fire stations at the end of a road that may have turnoffs into a fast food restaurant or something like that. And they use those as exit points and inner points back in there. So I guess my question is, is it something you see being a problem or, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Obviously, it's just, it's an issue that we've got to work through.
Gotcha.
Until we can get a determination of what the actual impact is, I can't really tell you at this point that it's a small problem-
Or a problem at all.
-with a simple solution-
Right.
...or it's a large problem with a complex solution.
Gotcha. Fair enough.
Okay?
Thank you.
The CDBGCV building, building plans were approaching 85% on those. The original intent was that site and the associated site improvements were going to be shared with the EOC. So right now, staff is reviewing those plans as well. I don't think they had the opportunity under the previous administration to review a lot of this. So we're taking some feedback from county staff and seeing what modifications may be needed to be done to the building plans at this point, based on their feedback and seeing what that impact is. And also, the county is looking at moving the EOC from that site. So it will require some reduction in that site. Obviously, we were set up for two buildings there. We'd be reducing the parking that would be needed for that. So that's where we're at with that. Okay? Canrid 137, utility extensions, construction is complete. Your CEI has submitted the DEP clearance documents for approval by DEP. We were copied on that earlier, well, you know, last week, I guess it was now. And we'll be waiting on the actual clearance approval from DEP to place that into service. But that normally comes about pretty quick, once they submit that information. So that's been submitted. Paving of 80th Terrace and 139th Drive, we were able to provide, prepare a design that took the end of the road where we were concerned about the property on. We were able to shift all the drains to the north side of the road there. So we'd have just a one-way slope on that section. We'd end up with basically a dual ditch on that north side to contain the water. And at this point, there's no longer a need for a drain there. So I think we can accommodate, we've accommodated what the request had been by doing that.
Great. That's good.
So right now, we're working on the bid package and doing our final utility coordination. We, based on our knowledge, it should be exempt from permitting by the Water Management District. We've submitted that request for the exemption approval from the district. There is a piece of right-of-way that the railroad retained in there. We provided that information to the county attorney back at the end of last year for acquisition of that. And we'll have to clear that with the right-of-way and the railroad. 153rd Road, this is approximately one mile long. We're basically about 90%. We're kind of waiting to make sure that the right-of-way acquisition goes as intended. That information has been provided as well. We will need to apply for a dusty roads permit once the right-of-way issues have been addressed and we know that that's moving forward. So.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Val.
Mr. Vavat, do you have an update on that 153rd right-of-way? We hadn't talked about it in a while.
Well, we're at the same place where we were before. We have three landowners that are problematic. And they're not willing to cooperate to, you know, donate the property, you know, to do that type of thing. I'll have to come back to you to get a resolution to be able to move forward on those items with a resolution for eminent domain, you know, for those particular parcels. I mean, the ones that we've cooperated with on County Road 136 and County Road 137, we were able to acquire all of those, you know, without having to go through the process. But I'm afraid that that process is going to have to be utilized for that stretch of road.
While we're on that right-of-way thing, 184th Street, did we ever acquire all that or are we still-
No, sir. We got two on the very end. Folks that, one just moved here from South Florida and one that is still in South Florida. On the, I get turned around to east end because the map is upside down, on the east end that we're having to deal with. But least contact has been, you know, better with them. The other landowners are all on board.
Are what?
All on board.
Okay, great.
On the 153rd, so you're saying that the three landowners that are in opposition of, I mean, we made an offer to them, right? Based on the appraisal of the-
Yes, sir, we did.
And they, that's not satisfactory?
Well, I didn't want to exactly tell you where they told me to put it, but that's-
Fair enough.
That was the gist of the conversations that I've had with them and their representatives so far.
Sunday morning, there was, the chief can attest, there was a fatality at the end of that road on to 250 end. I think, I don't think they lifelighted multiple folks. I don't know from the scene or from the hospital, but, and I don't know that 153rd being a dirt road not paved is a problem, but multiple crashes there. I'm hoping that we can get that road paved with some rumble strips to prevent the stop sign getting ran.
Probably one flash on the stop sign.
Something. But there was a loss of life there early Sunday morning.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Just a couple more. 76th Street from US 90 to River Road, that project's a little over 10 miles. We've completed the survey. Plans are approaching 30% on that project. There are some issues we're having to work through. The section up near 90 is very tight as far as right-of-way goes. We got a lot of development right up on the edge of the property line for the private properties there. We're looking at the possibility of just doing 10-foot lanes in there. It would require variance to be able to do that and try to, you know, stay within the existing right-of-way as much as possible. Once we get past 145th, I think it's Allenwood, we can then open it up. That's more rural area and be able to do that. We're looking at potential one-foot widening. That project has a budget of about 6.4 million based on our estimated cost with the improvements that we're talking about right now. We're at 6.6. So we've got to try to figure out a way that we can kind of get that a little bit down more into budget-wise. So we're exploring those options there. We've sent our plans out for utility consideration as well. So we'll be following up with county staff on how to make sure we can try to keep that close to budget. And it's not far off. DOT is pushing back a little bit on additional monies, but yet still an option. They have provided additional monies on a number of projects they've had recently. So that's where we're at with that. Ryan was able to help us out on the Greenway Trail. We were pretty much down to the end of that. We had an issue with Duke on the right-of-way over the river. Initially, that project was not to include the river crossing. We met with Duke, had support with Duke, the county, Columbia County supported Swanee County. We got it added in to be able to connect the trail that's on the Columbia County side to Swanee County. We ran into a little bit of a hiccup in that initially that they didn't have a clear title to it. That's gotten resolved. We're back on track now. We thought we were having an issue with state sovereign submerged lands because we were going across a river, but because it's an existing trestle there from the old railroad, we're above all the mean high water requirements. So we just got clearance that it's not, it's not going to be required to permit or any Tiffys from the state. So we're submitting the documentation to the Water Management District so we can get that exemption and then move that one to bidding and construction here soon. So that was some good news. We continue to support Jimmy and his staff and Mr. Scott at the Catalyst Site. We're working on the water main extension. As Mr. Norris mentioned, we did attend the meeting yesterday with Bender Holtz. We continue to work with the other clients out there that he is, you know, trying to move into the community. We're trying, we're assisting them where we can and working on that. As far as the water line, the water main, we have submitted that to DEP for permitting. So that one's getting ready to go to bid here soon for that. And we're just supporting the economic development efforts where we can out there at the Catalyst Site. And that's all I have. And they shall have something from me or Ryan.
Thank you for what you-
Any other questions, Mr. Bailey?
Yes, sir. I'm good. Welcome, Ryan.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, Rob.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Scott.
While they're here, I just wanted to tell you how much I appreciate Ryan jumping in this thing and making some things happen. Not that anybody was not doing anything before. It's just been, Ryan's very, very engaged, very supportive, very helpful and doing a tremendous job for us. And I just appreciate the foresight that Greg had in bringing him on board. We had a meeting the other day and he and DOT understands each other's language. So that's a big help. And he explained some things and they were like, he called us. But anyway, I'm just, I was impressed.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Mr. Mayor?
Ryan, could you give me an update on the two roads that we are doing in Branford? Are we going to-
Donnie. Donnie, you got to come to the mic if you're going to say something. Sorry.
Donnie Glover, Mayor of Branford.
What, where do we stand with the paving of the two roads in Branford? Are we going to just cover the existing road? Are we going to have to move the road and go through people's bedrooms?
Wyman Carter. So we have just submitted the plans back to FDOT for review. And I'm expecting that they're probably going to look at the plans for about a week. And then our plan is to get it back to the contractor. To answer your question, we are using the existing road bed. So there was, the initial design had a shift in the alignment and we went back to the original road bed. And there were some, there were some issues with that. So we went back to the original alignment. And like I say, the plans are done. There was also some utility concerns. We raised the profile to try to accommodate the utility concerns. And then we met with y'all in the field last week. And we called for the utility adjustments that were needed in the plan. So they're all now in the plans. So we're ready to go as soon as DOT gives us a green light.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there any other staff items? Moving on to Commissioner items, Mr. Hale?
Yeah, I do have one.
Commissioner item?
Yep, yep, yep. Give one to her, please.
Yes, sir.
Right there. I'll let you pass these down. This was something the board traditionally does. I think it's a three-year renewal. I gave the attorney a copy of this. It was supposed to be on the agenda, didn't make it. We were going to put it on the 18th meeting. And then Crime Stoppers got contacted by Attorney General's Office that they needed to move on it now. So I figured just make copies of it, bring it to you guys, see if you have a problem adopting this. We've done it since I've been on the board and probably before, I would assume. Mr. Vavat?
And there is a short agreement that goes with this gentleman.
Yeah, there's something for the public.
If somebody wants a copy.
Yep.
There's a short agreement that, you know, that goes with this. So if we're going to consider the item tonight, it's pretty basic. It's been the same thing, you know, on a three-year renewal basis for quite some time.
It's basically saying Crime Stoppers, the county commission approves Crime Stoppers. Swanee County be designated as a Crime Stopper Official Member program here in Swanee County. That's just basically what it is, guys. Yep.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Land.
I have no problem approving this contingent on the attorney's approval of the agreement. You can make that a motion if you like.
Yes, sir. Please do. Motion by Commissioner Land to approve the Crime Stoppers of Swanee County Incorporated. By a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Is there any other Commissioner items?
Thank you, guys.
County attorney items. Mr. Vavat, I'll let you handle that.
Yes, sir. There's one item that's come to our attention. I need to, for y'all, to give me direction on how to handle a lawsuit that's been filed against the county by Mr. Tal- Mr. Talat and his wife, seeking injunctive relief with regard to, uh, activity that's happening on 172nd Place. Uh, basically, they filed a lawsuit against, uh, the folks that were, are blocking the road. They've put, uh, various items in the road, including, uh, rocks, chains, posts, that type of thing, and are blocking, uh, access, uh, toward the end of 172nd Place. As part of the lawsuit, uh, the defendants, they asserted that the county needed to be, as a necessary party, an indispensable party, as one of the defendants in the lawsuit. Therefore, the county was, uh, brought into the lawsuit. So, what I'm really looking at right now is, there's two ways to really handle it. One, you can sit back because the citizen has the right, is a member of the public, to go ahead and seek the injunctive relief, to have them remove, you know, the, the items from the road, and then, um, you know, have an inju, a permanent injunction put in place. Uh, we can sit there and let them, you know, go through that. However, uh, because it's, it is a road that's in the public interest, and because this particular road is one that is, hasn't really been opened, but has been a trail going through there, uh, since it would deed it to the county in 1980, we have a lot of different roads that are in the county, you know, under the same circumstances. So, I believe that, you know, we need to, uh, take a more active role in this so that we can, you know, stop this from happening, you know, in other places. So, what I would recommend in this particular action is to, because we are a defendant, uh, with the, with the actual person that's having the problem, that, uh, we would then file a cross-claim against the, the defendant, uh, for that injunctive relief, uh, in support of, uh, the, the landowner. So, that's what I'm asking, you know, you really want to just sit back and wait and see, you know, what's happening there, or do you want to take a more active role to, uh, more or less make a statement, you know, that we're not gonna do this, allow this?
So, that's a dead-end road?
Yes, sir. If you look at the map that is in the second and third page of the amended complaint, you can see is the road comes across from the left down there, and you get down to the end where the red piece of property is.
Yes, sir.
The person that is the first lot to the east of that, which is shown on the next page, you know, just a little bit more clearly.
Mm-hmm.
They have, uh, placed the obstruction out there in that part of the road so that the person on page two cannot get to their property. If you look, as you go back further down the road, and you see how the red piece of property curves and goes down to the south as, as it goes down to the south, well, that little piece of property down there that you can barely see on this particular, uh, drawing, that, that is property that is dedicated to, uh, to the county in 1980 as a Swanee County park. And so, that's why this, uh, road is important. We have a, an actual deed to this property, you know, 60-foot easement going all the way down to the dead end, and as it continues to the, I'm gonna call it southwest because it's curving that way, we have the easement that goes all the way down to there. The easement extends back to the east approximately half a mile, and then it turns and goes north almost a mile, um, you know, back to where it, uh, terminates. And that's how that, all of these folks in this area, you know, get there. And, again, many examples, you know, out there in the county, so, um, it's, it's not a road that we've maintained, but it is a public road that is, you know, our, our road, and to be able to, uh, you know, provide access to the public.
Well, there's a, there's a procedure in place for closing a road, is there not?
Yes, sir, there is, but the procedure would probably not be applicable, you know, in this situation if the gentleman is trying to close off the road, because if he closes off the road, then he's gonna be, um-
Landlocked.
Landlocking the other person on the end down there. He would probably like that, but that's not, that's not what the purpose is.
When you say ta, take a more active role in it, what, what, what do you-
Well, we would typically defend in the action from, um, Mr. Morrison's one that filed this suit on behalf of the Talats in this action. Um, and in that particular action, he would, for the individual, be seeking that injunctive, injunctive relief. But, from our standpoint, leaving it to a citizen to be able to pursue the rights that we should be, you know, stressing on behalf of the citizens is what I'm saying. We ought to take a more active role to support the citizen as a result of that.
I understand that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yes, sir.
Uh, to Mr. Pravat?
Yes, sir.
Being that it's county property, the road here, and I see where it curves and going, coming down where you say the southwest.
Yes, sir.
Uh, that's something can be solved as simple as having the sheriff, having to move that obstruction from the road?
Well, there, in 1981, there was a resolution passed by the Board of County Commissioners that said that, uh, it empowered the sheriff to go out there and anything that is in the road and obstructing the road, uh, for them to go out there and take it and just take it down. Quite frankly, my research since that time, because we've had such change, changes, I haven't been able to see where that, where that was actually put into ordinance form. There was, if, if you understood the period of time, there were a lot of fences being moved and people blocking a lot of, um, roads that are like, not really dedicated roads, but you, roads that have been utilized for so long, and there were a lot of people, fence moving and blocking going on at the time, and that was what the subject of that particular resolution was. But I haven't been able to, you know, find since that time that there has been something either saying, "No, don't do that," or, "Yes," really supporting it and putting it, you know, into, uh, ordinance fashion.
Any other questions of, Mr. Pravat? And, do you just want guidance from us?
I just want to, you, what I'm really looking for is you want to go ahead and file the count, the cross-claim to, you know, pursue it, or do you want to just sit, sit back and, and see how it, you know, how it rocks along?
Well, I'm kinda with you on that. I don't, I don't, I think the county needs to take a more active role if somebody's just telling us, "You're gonna block off one of our roads," so.
Yes, sir.
That's my opinion. I don't know whether the rest of the board is on it, but-
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
I'm in agreement with you and Mr. Pravat on that as well, but I'd like to, too, that if the county go and incur some costs on that, can we, in that cross-claim, can, uh, can we retrieve the money that we spent on that?
Uh, no, sir. There's not a statutory provision that, um, does that. Of course, there's two ways to get attorney's fees. Uh, one is by contract or the other by statute, and, um, the, there is not a statute that allows you to recover those fees. However, there's a provision when it's, for lack of a better word, when you have silly things that are happening and people are doing things that, uh, obviously shouldn't be doing, there's a provision, it's called, uh, Chapter 57-105, where you can then go, after you prevail in the lawsuit, you can go back into the court and ask them to say that this was a ridiculous, you know, situation that we got put in, and then asked the court to award, uh, the fees and costs back against the owner. So, I mean, that would be the avenue, only avenue I could see right now to be able to recover those costs or fees.
So, with doing so with, working with the, uh, the other landowner, how, how will we go about working with them to get this resolved?
Well, what we would do in filing the cross-claim, okay, we would respond to the, um, the plaintiff, uh, citizen in saying, "We agree with you that, uh, we are the owners of the road and that they are improperly, you know, blocking the road."
Mm-hmm.
So, then we would file a cross-claim against our co-defendant, saying, "Okay, we agree with them, move the stuff." And, uh, with the, you know, we also would then have a permanent injunction, you know, against them, uh, to keep them from doing other things, you know, in that, um, road area. What it also will do is, although the, there is a deed, you know, there, uh, it'll establish that the road is no question that it's a, it's a county road. It hadn't been abandoned, it hadn't done anything, and so it'll, it'll have a side effect of being able to do that.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Land?
Um, Mr. Pravat?
Yes, sir.
Um, my question is, is if we proceed down this path of the cross-claim, can, I mean, I don't know the condition of this road. I don't know if, if our, if our road is 60-foot and there's just a little 20-foot pig trail down it, but it, could, can the defendant turn around and say, "Okay, you won, now come clean out these 35-year-old oak trees and make this road better shape and us incur a large expense on the road?"
No, sir, or Chapter 177, we had, although we own the road, uh, we do not have the obligation to maintain the road until we undertake that task. Once we undertake the task to maintain the road, then they could come back and make, you know, make us do it.
Okay.
It's just like one of these other, you know, subdivisions that we've had out there, you know, all over the county that, you know, have the roads going through there. Although those roads are dedicated to the county, uh, we don't have the obligation to maintain them. In a number of those situations, you know, we've maintained every other road or something, you know, like that, so people can get in, but it's the same situation.
That was where I was going with that, is that if there was opportunity for that to happen, then everybody's gonna start blocking their road, so, well, they're gonna come fix our road now.
No, sir. You don't know how many calls I've gotten that people are referred from you guys and, and your predecessors, saying that, "Oh, yeah, we, we'd, we'd love to go, you know, do your road and, you know, that kind of thing, but you gotta call Mr. Pravat and have him tell you that, you know, what we can, can and can't do." So-
Yes, but I would agree with the chairman and, um, Commissioner Perkins and probably you other guys, but, uh, I don't wanna speak for y'all, but I think we need to be proactive here and, uh, let the defendant know that that is our road.
I agree. So, do you, what do you need, Mr. Pravat? You need a motion to do this?
I just, well, to, just to proceed to defend, I'm going to do that. What I just wanted a consensus from you guys of really how you wanted to handle it.
Okay.
I think you have everybody on board?
Yes.
Okay.
Agreed.
All right, all right, thank you, sir.
This is there. Any other atti, uh, uh, any other county attorney items, Mr. Pravat?
Uh, no, sir, not this evening.
Moving on to general business, item number 10, discuss with possible board action, discontinuing non-emergency inter-facility transport service. Chief Hand.
Chairman Commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to, to discuss this, this evening. Um, you know, as everybody in the room's aware, we've been, been doing this for several years, and when I took over as chief, um, I wanted to give it its due diligence to make sure that this was something that we needed to do or not to do. Um, we've, um, over the last couple of years, this has become more and more of a burden on our department. It's putting wear and tear on our vehicles that is almost impossible to replace them due to the, to the shape of, you know, the, um, supply chain these days, increased maintenance costs. Those are, those are just the things it's doing to our equipment, but our people are our most important asset. We have low morale in the department because of, of some of the things they have to deal with, with it, and it's also made it almost an impossible, um, feat for us to recruit people to come to Swanee County because we do them. So, it's my recommendation that we get out of, out of the inter-facility transport business. We will still continue to do emergency transfers from the hospital if one of our citizens is, is in the hospital. Um, you know, if you guys decide that this is the route we want to take, we're not gonna leave a citizen in an emergency sitting in the hospital. We're gonna take them where they need to go, if a truck's not available from whatever company comes in. Um, but it's my recommendation that, that we can, that we discontinue it, and it'll also allow us to provide a much better emergency service to our, to our citizens if we discontinue this service.
What, what, what are you looking at a timeframe on that?
Um, basically, um, the way that, I mean, we're not gonna just step out today. Uh, we're not gonna leave people hanging in the hospital, but what my recommendation to you guys would be is, is, is primarily the hospital's responsibility to, to move those patients. They would negotiate with whatever private companies that they want to use. They would have to come at a later time and petition the board for a certificate of need to work to operate in an inter-facility capacity only, not non, not 911 emergency, but just for inter-facilities. Um, it would be my recommendation to have more than one company do that, just because they're only gonna be able to stand up, each company would only be able to stand up so many trucks, and if they overutilize them at a certain time, they wouldn't have a truck available. So, if we have multiple companies that are able to come in, um, but I'm, you know, I, I'm sure some of the companies that are available probably could stand up trucks in a few weeks, but whatever timeframe that may be, you know, we'll cover it until, until they get stood up and, and going.
If we do away with the non-emergency part of it, how many ambulances is that gonna take off the road that we're using now for that?
Well, we don't operate in a truly only emergency inter-facility capacity. Our trucks take a call as a call. Um, we would have an opportunity to look at possibly moving a crew around and, and even being able to put some people in, in areas that we don't have current coverage in right now. Um, and they would be utilized for the, for the 911 side. It's, it's basically just, it's taken that side of the business off. Our 911, our 911 service has been increasing every year. Last year, we, we went up over 900 calls on only the 911 side. So far this year, we've been, we've been slammed, so I don't know what the difference is since the first of the year, but we've got, we've got days that our guys are, are running 40, 50 calls a day countywide, and majority of that is 911. So, it, uh, it would just allow us to, to reutilize those, those staff members in, in emergency capacity to better, better service our citizens where there may not be coverage now.
So, I guess you will address this at budget time as far as lost revenue versus-
Right. We're, we're gonna be able to cover with what we've already collected this year and, and what we'll continue to collect through the end of the year with, with our 911 services, and like I said, we'll still pick up an emergency transfer here and there that's gonna continue to bring in collections. We'll be able to cover our proj, projected revenue, but with our loss, our, our savings in our, in our fuel costs and, and our main, I'm, I'm really expecting the maintenance costs to drop down, we'll be able to remain in budget, you know, no problem for this year, and we'll just have to look at, you know, I'll have to put some really thought into it before we get the budget workshops on. You know, we may have to reduce the amount of, of projected revenue a little bit because we're not gonna be, you know, doing transfers anymore, but we'll, you know, we'll be able to stay within budget, no problem.
But it'll probably take about a year for you to figure all that out.
It'll, it'll take a little bit of time for it to, for it to come around and even out, I think, but it, but, but it'll be, you know, it's, it's definitely, I think it's gonna be, there is a positive revenue over, over what it costs, but it's very hard to, to show exactly what that is because of the way we operate. But it's not, um, the, all of the other things that go along with it, of the negatives of it, it's, it's just, it's just time. It, it's, let a, let a private company take care of that hospital and-
Well, your population keeps growing.
Right, and it does, and it, like I said, our 911 service is taxed to the max all the time. You know, we, we have many days where we're down to one truck, you know, that has to move from somewhere and sit in McAlpin in the middle of the county because they're the only thing left available, so they can go in any direction. So, I believe it, it'll give us the opportunity to provide a better emergency service to, to the citizens.
Well, uh, well, you know where I've stood with that since this evening, so-
Yes, sir, and, and, and Commissioner Land as well. He's, you know, he's been a proponent from day one, and, and, you know, like I said, I, I wanted to give it its due diligence, but, you know, he's, he was right, and, and I, uh, you know, I think it's definitely, we, we can move forward as a fire rescue department on the emergency side, much better moving forward without, without the, the headaches and the expense and, and wear and tear on our vehicles that this is, that this is doing.
Well, and like you said, and I don't know how this works with them, but if you get out of that inter, inter facility transfer, if it comes to where they, they get in a tight at the hospital or whatever, and we're not doing that anymore, but if they needed our help, would we still go help them from time to time?
Oh, absolutely. We're, we will never let a citizen sit in the hospital that needs to go somewhere else, um, if we're available to go help them, and especially- to go somewhere else, um, if we're available to go help them, and especially in an emergency situation. But having multiple, multiple certificates of need, you know, to two or three different companies, the hospital would decide who their primary, who their primary is. They're, they're gonna be the one who calls whoever.
Right.
But they'll, but they like, you know, having a secondary company or two for them to call that can come and pick up the slack when that particular company's busy will, is, I mean, like I said, the hospital will make that decision, but we would be in that call chain if things really, really got bad. You know, we're, we're, we're not gonna let a citizen sit in that hospital and need to go to, to another hospital. That's not what we do. We're, we're a service provider.
Any other questions, Chief?
No.
Go ahead.
I, I was just gonna say that, that I, I had talked to the hospital about this, I don't know, a month or two ago. Um, and, and it wasn't particularly about this. It was about the ER, the hospital, the beds, that, but this was discussed, and some of the stats that, that I was given was last year, they had 21, 22,000 ER visits.
Right.
That, that means some people we took there, that means some people that drove themselves there or a family member took them. And out of those, I, I forget the exact number, but it was 900 and something got transferred out and were admitted to hospitals. Not saying that we did 900, but we probably did 95, 90% of them or something. I don't know what that number is.
We actually did 2,433 total inter-facilities. Now, that does include some nursing homes, but roughly, roughly 1,900 of those calls came out of a hospital.
Okay, I, I said 900. It was 1,900.
Yeah, so...
So, that's a lot of trips on our guys and women, um, you know, being stuck in a, an ambulance for, I don't know, six, eight, 10, 12 hours a day, and then that's, that's, that's those staff. And it's different if they're just running to Lake City, but from what I understand, those routes get pretty long sometimes as to where we have to take these folks.
Where are we going with those transfers sometimes? I know we go to Lake City a lot, but I know we go to Gainesville a lot, but...
We do about 70% of our transfers go to Lake City, but the other 30% go to Gainesville, Jacksonville, Tallahassee. Um, they, they keep their patients, HCA keeps their patients within network as much as possible. And their, their network hospitals are in Jacksonville. They do have North Florida and Gainesville, but North Florida's been so understaffed, they've been on transfer diversion forever. Um, so, Ocala, Tallahassee.
Wow.
We don't, we've, we've had a couple of times when we've had, um, uh, some type of emergency that they've sent to a specialty hospital. We've gone to Orlando like once in, over the time we've been doing it, but most of the time, we tried to give those long-distance ones to somebody else because we just didn't wanna take our trucks out of service for that long.
And just for the public, what's the Medicare rate on, on reimbursement for that?
Typical, we're, we're at a, at, um, on Medicare, we're at, most of it, the mileage is around $8 a mile, but the, the, on average, we, we average about $432 return on a Medicare call. Doesn't matter what we bill. That's what we average.
Well, that's where I was going with that.
Right, so it, it's very hard to cover costs, you know, especially if you're driving a long distance, and that's the kind, and Medicaid, Medicaid, if, if it's a Medicaid patient, it's a flat fee of $190. And if it's within county, zero mileage. If it's out of mileage or out of county, then you get, once you leave the county, you get $3 a mile on Medicaid.
So, from the county line to wherever you're going, you get $3?
You get $3 a mile on Medicaid.
Right.
But from the hospital to the county?
From the hospital to there or wherever, you know, or if we pick a Medicaid patient up on a 911 side, it's, it's $190 flat fee. That's it. But that is part of what the PMT program was about, to recoup some of that.
Right.
That we did earlier in the year.
I was just gonna say, I think both of you guys were there when we had the meeting, and you were there, I think, Chief Hand. We had a meeting with the hospital one night out there, and this was a discussion along with beds and things of that nature.
Yeah.
And I don't like to use the word triage, but I mean, that, that's what a lot of the community refers to it as. They feel like, you know, you guys are just triaging folks to other places. But, I mean, I know there've been some good stories out there too, and I've heard those stories, so I'm not here to beat up on them, but what I would say, as large as they are, as healthy as they are, certainly they have good relationships with companies that can provide that transfer.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And they, and they have actually started talks within network. They're doing it in other areas of putting their own trucks on to do some of their inter-facilities stuff.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would just add to the chief that, um, I'm, I'm happy for the change. I, I always felt like that as, as a, as a county, our responsibility was to get to that scene and to get those folks to the hospital. Um, and I know you do that and your staff does an amazing job. I hear great stories of, of them coming out and being respectful and, and doing, doing unimaginable things in the back of that ambulance, but, uh, you know, I'm glad that we're gonna use all of our resources to get our citizens from wherever that call come, originated from, to that hospital where there's a helicopter or a other equipment that's not in the back of that ambulance.
Yes, sir.
And we're gonna use all our resources to benefit them. And I agree with you. I don't want our citizens sitting in the hospital waiting on a transfer if it's an emergency situation and, hey, they call and say, "Hey, I got a heart attack patient. I gotta get him to Gainesville," but this other company, and we've called three of them and they're all three hours away. Well, just said that, hey, we'll jump on board and get, get our citizen to wherever they need to go for that situation. So, that's good to hear, too.
Absolutely.
Well, and in my 25 years of being involved in this, in this county, an emergency cert, an emergency situation in that hospital has always been treated like a 911 call from day one, when they weren't doing transfers, to when we started part-time doing them, to when we took them over full-time.
Mr. Perkins.
I support what she was saying, you know, get out this, this agreement. Uh, if it's gonna cause lost morale and to cause harm to the department when he built the department up to be, to great standards. And then, you know, list of comments, it sounded sad, though, uh, to not have that. I know the hospital don't have any beds, and so all the patients now that needs more attention that they've been shipped out to other hospitals. Uh, and it's kinda sad that you're getting only $400 something when there are helicopters getting $7,000 to transport people out, you know, and, and you, you guys are sitting there working there, trained professional EMTs that's working on those, those patients the whole time and carrying them over there. Um, so I do, I support that, you know, and hopefully they'll get somebody in here like a century they had before and they're working there to get these people. It's something for you to have to take from the hospital and, and carry to another hospital when your job is to get them from out here to the hospital to get care. So, I, I do support that.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I got one more thing while he's here. I almost forgot about it. I got a phone call from a gentleman in my district, and, uh, I promise y'all, normally when I answer that phone, I'm, I'm puckering up and getting ready, and I know it's gonna be one of those phone calls, uh, but it wasn't that. It was a good phone call, and, and he was grateful to 911, the dispatcher, uh, to EMTs and firefighters that showed up. It, it was a weird thing. On a Monday, his mom got ill, and you guys had to come out, and, and that was, it was close, but you guys did a great job. And then on Thursday of the same week, his wife had an accident, and you guys came out.
Oh, wow.
And he said it was just so professional. So, please let the guys know. I told him I wouldn't mention his name. He didn't want his name mentioned, but he does want you to call him. So, I'll give you that information.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm very proud of our staff. They, they do a phenomenal job 99.9% of the time, and when they don't, they hear it from me, 'cause it's, you know, I look at, I look at what we do. Our, our job is, is a public servant, and it's our job to take care of our citizens no matter what need they have. And, and so, I, I really appreciate that, and I definitely would love to give you that.
And the 911 staff, too, couldn't say enough good things.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
They were walking and talking through things, so, um, just everyone was professional, he said. And that, that's good as a commissioner to hear that, folks. I tell you, that, that's inspiring.
That's great to hear.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you.
Any other questions, Chief Hand?
No.
No.
Thank you, Chief Hand. Or do we need to do anything with this, or is this just discussion here, or do we need...
That's not a question. That'd be...
Attorney?
Well, I think because it's, goes through the budget process, you know, that at some point, if you're going to, you know, cut those things off, you need to, you know, but y'all need to adopt a time to say, "Okay, May 1st, June 1st," you know, something like that to, to give them direction.
So, Mr. Chairman, could we just do a consensus to allow Eddie to start those conversations, to come up with those timelines with the hospital and give them long enough time to procure the backups or the alternatives?
Sure.
And then come back to the board and say, "Hey, I've met with HCA, and they say they'll be live by May 1 or June 1 or whatever," and then we start talking about. Can we just do that?
Yes, sir. That's fine. I mean, I just was trying to emphasize that he just can't pick a time on his own. Y'all gotta pick a time.
Right, 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 right.
All right. I will, I will start those conversations tomorrow and, and see if, you know, hopefully I'll be able to come back to you next board meeting with, with some answers. And, um, I'm pretty confident that I know of, I know of two companies that are interested, so, uh, but I feel confident that the hospital, the hospital's been in contact with me about them starting their, their trucks up and everything, and how is that gonna affect us and everything. So, I'll have that, I'll, I'll get that back to you soon as possible.
Appreciate it, Chief Hand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Are there any additional agenda items? See none. Public concerns and comments. Anybody?
Yes, my name's Fred Martin, and I'm 15850, 141st Road, McAlpin, Florida. I was up here two weeks ago and asked you about doping and slinging on the northeast side of town. I was wondering if y'all done anything about it? I talked to you.
I remember.
Two weeks ago.
Yes, sir.
Have you done anything about it?
No, sir.
Why not?
I hadn't had that conversation with the sheriff. I was hoping the sheriff would be here that night when we were doing that, but he wasn't here that night, so...
Well, they're still slinging dope over there, and when someone dies, he's gonna get charged with it.
Mr. Buddy, can you come up here just a minute?
I'd hate to put him on the block, but I was gonna ask him to.
Well, I just need to know is that, I'm not sure where he's talking about.
Over here in northeast section, there's a trailer park with like 10 trailers and a basketball goal.
Davis Street.
And there's another one that the chief of police told me about. It has four trailers and a basketball goal.
Is this county? Is it county or...
They, they play basketball and sling dope there all day long, half to night.
I understand that.
Well, this is the first I, I've heard of this, but we've got the Drug Task Force rolling now. Be glad to put them over there, Fred.
They've been doing this for months over there.
Either way, be it city or the county, we're still the sheriff's office. We represent citizens of this entire county.
Yes, sir.
And we'll be glad to offer up some resources to do that, and...
I've been, I've been hearing about this for months now.
You may have, Fred.
And you know, I don't lie, do you?
No, you don't. But here's, here's what I'll tell you. In the last couple of months, we've reestablished our Drug Task Force. We also have teamed up with North Star, which gives us resources in five different counties, and, uh, we can address that issue.
What they want over there, they want you to come by and chop the basketball goal off at the ground.
That ain't, that ain't my doings. That...
That's what they want.
You put it on the same road where they need to clean the other stuff up, but I...
But, but they got basketball goals at these two places that sling dope.
Yeah.
They want the basketball goals cut down. They don't care about playing basketball. They want their kids to grow up safe and not walk outside and see a bunch of people slinging dope in front. And when they call 911, they get hung up on.
Mr. Martin, okay, I think we got the point.
That's not right. I've been to Sheriff's three times. This is run Sheriff's again.
I, I, and I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just saying they standing right there.
Someone keeps calling. They get hung up on when they call 911. It's not right.
Fred, if you could, if you could provide dates and times, I will tell you, the wonderful thing about technology today is every phone call's recorded, every phone call is monitored, and, uh...
Some of these things don't even call 911 no more, chief.
Well, Fred, if they can't hang, be hung up on if they ain't calling 911, and, uh...
Yeah, but they, I've talked to them.
Anyway, we'll, we'll look into this. No problem.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome, Fred. I, I have one thing if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
Buddy Williams, 8827 145th Drive, Live Oak. We've been talking about all of the activities going on. I just wanna share next Monday in, uh, Branford, it's Autism Awareness Month. One in 36 people are affected with autism. Uh, we're gonna have a, they put together a little educational day down there from 4:00 to 6:00. Uh, I think it'd be nice if, uh, some of you representatives could just stop by.
What time?
They're gonna have, uh, 4:00 to 6:00.
Next Monday, you said, Buddy?
No, no, Autism Awareness.
Next Monday.
Oh, 4:00 to 6:00, Monday the 10th. Is next Monday the 10th? Yes, the 10th. Uh, they're gonna have card from Gainesville. They're gonna have legal services. They're gonna talk to folks about, uh, how to get Medicaid, Medicare if they qualify for that. Uh, Branford Library. We are going to have the, uh, our lifesaver, Project Lifesaver down there to share with the people of the community. I'm sure everybody in here has an individual in their family, or you know someone who's been affected by autism or other cognitive disorders. Uh, I think it's a great thing to do, uh, but it's, it's Autism Awareness Month right now. And, and having a special needs child myself, I can tell you, you don't realize how little resources we have in, in North Florida. However, there are ways to obtain these resources, and, uh, the south end of the county's doing their little fair down there, and, uh, it'd be nice to see some of you, because it, it's a lonely place when you're dealing with a disabled individual that, that can't take...
They're gonna get tired of the stuff in Florida, Mississippi is the best way you can go for having an autistic child.
Thank you.
Hey, appreciate you.
Ms. Betty, come on in.
I'm glad that he mentioned that. That should've been me. But I just wanna add to that. We have also, uh, started a program at the, uh, library, um, for special needs, autistic kids, and we have received a grant that has helped to fund that particular department. So, I echo him. Um, please spread the word. Um, we have a lot of citizens that's been coming to the library, uh, and they're, one of the reasons why we applied and got the grant is because they said that they had to go too far away to get the services that they should be able to get in their own county. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Betty.
My name is Keith Broders. I moved into Live Oak about two months ago.
Address, sir, if you don't mind.
Yes, it's, uh, 201 Ranchera Street Northwest here in Live Oak. What I'd like to suggest is that the county board of commissioners consider the possibility of declaring the time period from Mother's Day to Father's Day, that 30 days in between, to declare that as the proclamation for the families. Let's celebrate the family and the, and the sanctity of the family and recognize that as a resolution by the county commissioners.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? No more takers? Moving on to administrators' comments and information. Mr. Greg Scott.
Just a few things, Commissioner. Um, you've got in your packets a reminder that Development Authority will be, we sent out a advertising to ask for nominations, uh, application for nominations for, not nominations, for email that wanted to serve on the Development Authority. Um, it's time to reappoint those. There's a couple that's been expired or will expire, and, um, I would encourage you also to revisit your appointees and see if there's anybody that may not want to participate, may not have been participating. Uh, but we'll have on agenda next meetings, you can appoint who you wish to, to serve on that very, very, very important, uh, board. The, um, you asked me last time about the chip seal versus paving. Uh, paving is about 60% higher cost than chip seal. Uh, just give you some numbers. Um, we still have a, mentioned to you last time about the beaver infestation. We've got, uh, we've got it all from 136A all the way down to Low Lake Road. Uh, we're working with the Game of Fish trying to find trappers. We need to do some repair work, uh, on some roads, some borings and, and soundings and things to see what kind of voids we have under the roads. We had a, a cave in the other day on one of the roads. Um, but, um, if anybody knows a trapper, or we need a trapper. So, um, uh, Game of Fish says that we can eradicate those, but we've got, uh, some friends and neighbors that, uh, don't like that either. So, uh, so we gotta protect the roads somehow, but, um, so we gotta get through that proper process. Um, uh, we also, now we've got some... We also, now we've got some newer vehicles, some we, y'all approved, some used and some new vehicles for purchase not long ago, and now we've trickle, trickling those down, the ones we had down the line, and we've got a stockpile of used equipment that we're going to be auctioning off soon. We'll bring that back to you for approval, but just so you know, we're, we're moving those through the process. I appreciate you letting us buy what we had budgeted for. That's about all I've got, unless you, you've got any questions for me?
I don't, anybody?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Provant, any closing?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes, sir. Just a couple things. I was just getting back from a trip, I had a trip out of town to go up to, I mean, Walker, Wisconsin, to a funeral and traveling. I just look at a lot of infrastructure being done and a lot of building and things, and it's just amazing. But, you know, thankful that we have some great roads here. There are roads that need repair, but compared those roads I seen there, we got some good roads. So we thank God for our team will keep our roads up, do a great job. But Mr. Scott also, he's, he's doing a great job out there, thank you for that. And he's doing the review on our employee rules, and I like to add, if we're watching the review on those rules, to add in, to considering the holiday, June 19th, June 19th holiday, to include that in, he's in his review, the 19th of June. And other than that, it's just great for us, great meeting, and thank you for all the things that are being done.
Sir.
I appreciate everybody for coming, and I was talking with Dana the other day, Thompson, and Mr. Buddy Thompson from Precision. I think he's, she said he's took a turn for the worse, so everybody keep their family in their prayers.
Yes, sir, I would just, a couple things. I think we, three of us attended a luncheon earlier today at Heritage Park and Gardens. I don't know, it was super nice. I don't know if any of you guys in the public have been there recently or not, but they've made a lot, a lot of improvements. The place is really looking nice, and they're continuing to do more and more stuff out there. Great venue, that's a great asset to our community. It was a controversial topic at, at some point, whether or not it would come to fruition or not, but it did, and it's really headed in a good direction, so I want to come in.
They honored Mr. Uli, too, I think, out there.
Yep, Mr. Uli has a gazebo named after him. I saw Mr. Ford here. He must have left. But Mr. Uli has a gazebo named after him. He's a, he's a veteran, retired city councilman, law enforcement, just asset to the community as well. But anyway, I was just going to mention that, and then just, you know, tell everyone, have a happy Easter, and remember the holiday.
Absolutely, okay. On the heels of that, Ms. Carissa Jimmy's iron rod that keeps him in order and marching to the beat of a drum invited us out to West Out Baptist Church last Thursday, and Mr. Meeks went, myself, and it was a great show of what Easter's all about. I wanted to mention that because we don't need to forget that. We wouldn't be here if it wasn't for the sacrifices and the price that he paid for us, so...
Yes. Just want to remind everybody, it's Catfish Festival this Saturday, is it not? What time's that start? Nine? Nine o'clock in Branford? Nine to what, Mr. Mayor Ford? Nine to four?
This Saturday?
Set.
This Saturday, okay.
Also, like Commissioner Hale, Kim and I went out to the Westwood thing, and I really enjoyed that. It was really nice, nicely done, and also Happy Easter, and keep in mind the Caprilli family, as Mr. Ernie Caprilli lost his wife at a pretty young age. So just keep them in your prayers, and that's all I have. Just need a motion to dismiss?
So move.
Second?
Motion by Commissioner Perkins, second by Commissioner Land. All in favor, aye?
Aye.